Chairman, the honorable Howard Chipley preside. We remain standing. At this time, we're going to call to order the September two thousand and twenty meeting of the Hammond County Legislative Body. I want to ask Commissioner Bobby Hahn to lead us as we pray to go. Please.
That's right. Dear every Father, Lord, once again, we thank you so very much for allowing us together together. Father, we do so to honor you, to glorify you in all of our decisions and everything that we endeavor. Father, we ask you to be with each person here and in our community, that we can think like-minded, solve issues, offer the great reward in you. Lead us, God, in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. This time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Taylor Ward to lead us in our pledge.
Everybody come to attention, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Unfortunately, tonight, we're going to have to do everything off the board. So when somebody makes a motion, make it loud enough so that the clerk and hear who made the motion. I've been asked to announce that if you are in the audience and you have a hat on, that you please take it off. I want to remind all commissioners to turn on your mics, please. And then I want to make one clarifying statement regarding the ten-day rule. I understand on Facebook that some people have misapplied this rule to other business of the commission. It only applies to contracts owned. The ten-day rule applies to contracts owned. Okay? At this time, we're going to recognize Mayor Britton. At this time, we'll do our robe call.
Jim Faber.
Here.
Chris Ketchum.
Here.
Randy DeBoer.
Here.
Tom Stoddy.
Here.
Tim Goulins.
Right here.
Bobby Hahn.
Here.
Tim Horner.
Here.
Joe Hansman.
Here.
Ali Norwood.
Here.
Mike Reed.
Here.
Wayne Neesmith.
Here.
Howard Chipley.
Here.
Jim Stell.
Here.
Taylor Ward.
Here.
And Tim Gray.
We have a forum for business. Mayor Britton, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the last several months, we've lost two of our planning commission family, and we've kind of delayed recognizing these folks and their families because of the COVID situation. But it's time to move forward. And so tonight, we want to honor Bob White and his family for Bob serving on the Planning Commission for nine years from 2010 to 2019. Bob is one of the best men that I've ever known and a man of high integrity, a man who didn't like to play jokes on anybody and everybody he could find, and a man who served well with the Planning Commission. And his wife Judy and daughter Kim are here. And ladies, just want to thank you for sharing Bob with us because it took some time for him to serve on the Planning Commission and then this recognition of his service to the Planning Commission. We just thank you very much.
At this time, the chair would receive a nominee for vice chair.
Chairman, I nominate Tim Goulins.
Tim Goulins has been nominated for vice chair. Any other nominees? Hearing no other nominations, then the chair will entertain a motion that nomination ceases and that he be elected by acclamation.
Vomiting.
Thomas Stoddy moves. Second, Taylor Ward seconds the motion. All those in favor of the motion, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Vice Chair Goulins, and we will deal the charity at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Okay, now I'd like to take nominations for chair. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Howard Chipley.
Howard Chipley.
Second.
All in agreement? Any opposed? Captain Fisher.
Deal with the second item there if you don't care, please, salary.
Salary of the chairman. Do we want to keep it the same or do we want to raise it?
If I was chair, I'd make a motion we keep the salary as it is.
Keep the salary as it is.
Uh, chairman, I would second that.
You second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay the same. Congratulations, chairman. Thank you. Vice Chair. Who's second? Bobby Hahn. I appreciate the opportunity of serving you for another year as chairman of the body. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue with Ms. Laura Chris-Caps.
Okay, we have a motion that we continue with Chris Capps. Is it? We have a second from Taylor Ward. That we continue with Chris Capps. All those in favor of that motion, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Capps.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for appointments, basically reappointments to the Hammond County Civil Service Board. Neil Johnson, Ryan Kramer, and Ed Simkowski are being renominated for terms to expire in September two thousand and twenty. We would entertain a motion. Taylor Ward moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim Goulins seconds the motion. All those in favor, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The appointments are approved. Okay. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Stell. What's that? Okay. We would recognize Chairman Jim Stell of the County Rules Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item three A, approval of conceit counter items with the addition to regular counter item, Hammond County Emergency Communications Board, Tim Goulins, and we move over to four B. I put up four motion.
All right, we have a motion with that, including that addition. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Bobby Hahn. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor of the motion, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved.
I'll never turn.
Thank you, Chairman Stell. At this time, we're going to entertain comments for items that are on the agenda. However, this particular item is not on the agenda, but we at this time are going to recognize Dr. Perry, Director of the Hammond County School Board.
The chair members of the commission certainly good to be here with you. Certainly going to provide you a quick update on the school and then answer any questions that you may have. First of all, what we hope to accomplish is kind of give you a recap of what happened in the first two weeks of school, talk to you a little bit about the safety procedures, discuss with you our infection rates of what we've had in school thus far, our plans to keep school open, then our extended school program, give you a quick update on the West House School project. So right now, on the first two weeks of school, we've got about twenty-eight percent of our kids go online, so about seventy-two percent were in class, and that actually is going pretty well. Our enrollment is down just a little bit for various reasons. In nineteen twenty, we had ten thousand four hundred and eighty-four. This year, we've got about ten thousand one hundred and forty. But that number does continue to increase as we go throughout the year and on what. Also, we provided that online instruction that is going actually fairly well for us. Our infrastructure, which we were a little bit concerned about, our broadband, our ability to push that message out with all the kids being online, does actually stay intact. We've been pretty fortunate that our infrastructure has held. We've had a couple breakdowns from some of the local vendors. When it gets out to them, I don't know that they've ever had to deal with this much volume. And so we've had a few problems with internet provider outside the school system, but our infrastructure has held. We have been very fortunate to have all of the protective equipment, school that we need up in Chrisville. The mayor has been extremely beneficial and helpful to us. Anytime that we needed masks, gloves, any of those kinds of things, especially Chris, he's been incredibly helpful and all that. And overall, we feel pretty good about the school operation. Now clearly, anytime that you start a brand-new online program, there's going to be problems, going to be issues, but for the most part, we feel pretty good about that. Kids are getting on, lolling on each morning, we're having the instruction. So at high school level, middle school level, that's synchronous, and what that would mean is the teacher is teaching that class of those kids in person, but it's also being filmed, so the kids, it's taken out for the one. The kids in class will be watching that teacher, and then the kids at home will be watching that teacher. And that teacher can't interact with the kids at home, so if the kids at home have a question, then they can ask over the computer, and the teacher will go ahead and answer those questions. And so the kids at home and the kids who are in class are both taking the same class as we go through that. And in that way, you're able to take all the classes in the normal school year. Same thing happens at the middle school level, with the exception of Lincoln, they do it just a little bit different, but we do it synchronous at the middle school level, so you're in class and at home taking the same class. In elementary school, we've actually broken it down, so one teacher will deal with third grade, Perry D. Margery, another teacher will deal with second grade, and we kind of go, we group those kids together. Because it's really hard to do synchronous if you've got a group of second graders in class and then a group of second graders at home. That can certainly be a challenge. But overall, things are going well. We're having a virtual forum Tuesday night at six o'clock in terms of allowing parents to email us questions in, and we will answer those particular questions. So that will give us our first opportunity here at the beginning of the year to see how we're doing, see what problems we are struggling with, and see how we can improve. So we're actually encouraging parents to call in or to email in. Now, on that night, it's not an interactive piece because with the entire community being able to come in, we don't know how we can manage that. But what we will do is all week, and next week, parents can email questions or call in questions, and then we'll answer those particular questions live about problems, issues that are going to happen. Update on safety procedures, still taking the temperature, taking it every day, doing the mask. We are social distancing as much as we possibly can. There are some classes where we're able to do that more effectively, some classes it's a little harder. We have created some staff-student barriers. We've done it with plexiglass and we've done it with plastic in terms of giving those shields for the teachers to teach behind, so if they elect to do that, we try to get those barriers for them. As I mentioned before, we've got the PPE in each one of those. The contact tracing takes us an enormous amount of time. We're spending about two to three hours a day on contact tracing. And that's where a kid were to test positive yesterday, then we've got seating charts, so we go back to that seating chart, find every student that was within six feet of that student for more than fifteen minutes, and then we call those particular parents and we send those particular kids home. And as it gets more elaborate, of course, in a high school situation, those kids are in the lower four classes, if they're involved in athletics, if they're riding the bus, and so it begins to be very complicated with that, very time-consuming. But Ms. Kelly Smith, who's the coordinator of school health, coordinator, she's done a wonderful job at that, and her school nurses have done an incredible job, so we're very pleased with that. And health department, of course, Sharon McEmmer is always such a great help to us, and we really, really appreciate her. The other part that we're doing, we're really trying to encourage people to stay home. So if you're sick or you're symptomatic, stay home. Don't come to work. Don't send your kid to school if they're sick or symptomatic. And then the other part that we're having too, and this is a little bit more difficult, if any member of your family is sick, stay home. Don't have your younger daughter go to get tested, but then send the older son onto school. That's the piece that we're having the most trouble with right now. Or dad's going to go get tested, but they still go ahead and send the kids to school. And so we're really trying to work with parents that if anybody is symptomatic, or if you've had potential contact with somebody, stay at home so that for the overabundance of caution, we don't get folks infected. Right now, on our infection rates, now this was of yesterday, so we had twelve students who were confirmed, this is since the start of school. So since September the eighth, we have twelve students, and we've got ten staff members. And we think those numbers are pretty much online with what we've seen in Ken. Again, we've got ten thousand people coming to school, well, seven thousand, we've had about three thousand go online, but we've got seven thousand kids coming to school. We've got, you know, close to a thousand school or a thousand SAT members coming to school, and so with that, the numbers are not that high. We've had to quarantine a hundred and eleven folks, so of these twenty-two people, they were within six feet more than fifteen minutes of other students. And so a lot of this happened in our preschool classrooms and kindergarten classrooms where we're not requiring the mask, and that creates a little bit of an issue for us. But now, the other part is that about half of those came from three different families. So we had a mother, a father, who both taught for us, and then three kids in that one family. So we had a lot of situations in which we had multiple siblings and a mom or a dad that taught for us ended up getting infected. So it's really our safety procedures, I think, are working, but we do know that this will increase as we go through simply because we've got a lot of folks coming through the school, but we are taking precautions to prevent that. The sub field rate, this is the amount that we have subbed, so if a teacher's out, can we get a sub? Last week, we had about ninety-two percent field rate, which is relatively good for us. This week, it's gone down a little bit to ninety percent. We can see that this is going to go, continue to go down as we go through the school year because as more of our subs, they do get sick, and more of our teachers are quarantined, then we would have less availability for subs. So we've already talked about the enrollment piece there, but we will continue to monitor that sub field rate to make sure that we've got teachers in classrooms. Our contingency plans to make sure that we keep school open, we're isolating people very quickly, so if we identify that you're sick, don't come to school. If you do come to school sick, we're taking your temperature, we're monitoring the symptoms, and we try to send you home very quickly. Also, we're teaching remotely, so what happens with that, if a classroom teacher, if the second-grade classroom teacher tests positive, she has to go home, of course, but most of our teachers so far, and most of our kids, well, virtually none, have had any real major symptoms, and they've been a little bit sick, they've not incredibly sick. So our teachers have actually, most of them have elected to go home. I'm going to teach remotely, so I'll teach from home, and then we put a sub in your classroom to supervise the students. But that certified teacher who knows those kids, they are still teaching so that we can continue the instructional process and not lose a lot of instructional time. We're also repurposing staff, so we've had some instructional coaches, some instructional facilitators, some reading coaches, some English as second language teachers, some special ed teachers. We're actually repurposing those individuals now to become classroom teachers because if we lose a teacher, the minimum they're out is for ten days. They could be out as much as twenty-four days, depending on certain situations. We don't want that loss of instruction to occur that long, and so we're trying to get certified people back in that classroom, so we're not getting substitute to come in and teach Algebra One, or substitute to come in to teach reading, or substitute to come in to teach chemistry. So we're trying to use our certified people to do that. Of course, we are expanding the sub list, and then we're also using central office staff, so we told folks that we're asking a lot of you, and so we've actually put ourselves on the sub list, so if they cannot find a sub, then they're calling us, and we've got a list of folks, including me, that we will go out and we will sub in the classrooms and make sure that we do our part to keep school open. So you can see how bad it's going to get if you allow a superintendent to come in and teach. The extended school program, right now, we've got about three hundred and twenty students enrolled in the extended school program. We've got about a hundred and sixty in daily attendance, so not all those kids go every single day of those three hundred and twenty. Some will come on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, some will come on Tuesday and Thursday, some will just come on Monday, but three hundred and twenty and enroll about a hundred and sixty a day. Operational costs are going up just a little bit because we are opening up on multiple sites now, trying to keep the kids separated, and then also to make sure that we provide a greater convenience. We're actually open on all of our elementary schools, so each one of the elementary schools we're open because what we realize, if a kid can't go straight from class down to the extended school program, parents have no way to pick them up who are working, so it just kind of defeats the purpose. So we're open in every one of those elementary schools to help out our working parents and help out our staff members. We are open pre-competitive six, and we had requested funding a couple of months ago, and I talked to Mr. Britton. Right now, we're doing okay. We're not accepting, we don't really need to request that right now. We'll see how we can do, and if it works out, we're ready to maintain, then we won't request that particular funding. On this, just a quick update of the school. These are just some quick pictures. This is the front of the building, so now when you drive up, the circle is actually right here in the bottom right-hand corner, so that would be that circle that you normally come around. So this would be the administrative wing, this would be the offices, and the school resource officer, the bookkeeper, some of those areas. This is looking into the office right now, and of course, you'll see the blocks up, and they're putting the brick up, so that brick veneer will go on that. You're underneath the canopy, so the area for that trash bin is right there, that will be the actual hallway that actually goes into the main entrance currently. So you would come up in that particular area. This is a picture of the inside, so we're putting up the metal studs now for the office area. They're actually working on the drywall right now, so we do have it in the dry, with the exception of the doors and the windows. This is a front picture of the building, so you can see right to the right of the gravel. We've got steps going up because of the grade elevation from where the front entrance was, there's about a six-foot drop of that, so you'd have to come up to the steps on that. That will be the awning, so as parents or as students are waiting on parents to pick up, or as they're waiting to come into the building, there'll be that awning there to kind of give them some protection from elements. We've got the front retaining wall right there on the front, and then there's another canopy to the far right of that. So if you were to walk up through those steps and then go straight, that would be where the current, the current front door is. Also, this is just another picture standing up on top of that canopy or underneath the canopy there, so you would come up to that, walk underneath the canopy, and then go through the front door. This is a picture of the front with cafeteria. So with cafeteria expansion, as we push out, a lot of big windows with natural light coming in. This is the same picture from the side, so it comes out almost to the parking lot or almost to the sidewalk there. Again, another picture of the front. This is the inside, so you can see that they're beginning to get some of the metal pilings up on top there for some of the drywall that we will put up in some of the roof sections. Again, another picture of that wall going up in the cafeteria. Actually, inside the cafeteria, we actually have some of the grid work already in for the drop ceiling, and already have some of the duct work accomplished. This is looking into, from the current dining hall outside into that new area that I just showed you, so we're beginning to work on that. These are some of the new restrooms, so the sinks, and actually the sinks, you can see most of the sinks from the hallway. So we do have a lot of problems, and this is what we normally do on new construction when we do this, we put the sinks so they're visible from the hallways. If anybody making, wanting to make a bad decision about wadding up a paper house and putting them in the sink and some of those kinds of things and turning on the water, that prevents a lot of that from happening. Of course, these are the new murals that we have with the stalls, the new floor that we've got. We ended up, we pour almost every floor now from up on the wall down with one continuous port instead of putting tile in there. The tile creates a lot of problems because the water that we have in there seeps underneath tile, it loosens up the glue. We have problems, so this is a port epoxy floor all the way through, and we tried to match it with some of the school colors with that. Some of the stuff that we're not entirely pleased with, but we really don't have any options, we have to do make-up air, so we have to turn over all the air in a classroom every twenty minutes or thirty minutes, and so we had to put these metal ductwork in all the single classrooms to get that air exchange, and that's just part of the new regulations. Actually, it will be a beneficial and help thing because then we're pumping out all the bad air and pumping in fresh air. So we feel good about that, but the problem associated with that, of course, is the ductwork is exposed, and we will paint it so that it will blend in, but we do have that. Also, the new HVAC systems, we normally try to get those up off the floor now, and so we've mounted these on the ceilings. Some of the bigger rooms would have two units on both sides, some of the smaller ones would have only one unit, but that, everybody will be getting new HVAC systems. Another picture of the HVAC system. Electrical service, this is a three thousand amp breaker. These are incredibly expensive, and we said that a big portion of the money that we received came, went into mechanical and electrical and plumbing, and we have to run new electrical wire, and so this plus all of the copper wire that we run is a big part of the project. And then also, the other thing was some of that required work that we had to do, we had to put up sprinkler systems throughout the building that was not sprinkled. And then we also had to add generators and some other things to increase pressure for the sprinklers to actually work. We didn't have enough pressure to operate all the fire suppression, the new fire suppression, so we had to get generators and pressure valves to make sure that we had that. So, Mr. Chair, wanted to be quick, but also just wanted to make sure that we continue to update the county commission. You've always been very good to us, and we appreciate that, and wanted to just come out this evening for updates if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. On the other side of the step of the front main, is there a ramp down?
There is a ramp, so we already had a ramp and situation to get up on that, so if you're facing the building on the right-hand side, there is a ramp, and we had to have that for handicapped accessibility, of course.
I'm sorry, what y'all are doing with my Bobby, is that all the teachers and everything, trying to get all this virus stuff everywhere with all the kids and stuff like that, and on top of that, you're teaching kids. I just want to thank you and thank your staff, if you would, and I don't know how good I am, so you'd be something.
We already, I think I can go in and teach history fairly well. I think I can bring back my old history teaching days, and that would be okay. Now, chemistry and math, it was a long three years, now algebra one.
I made your time.
Anyone else? Thank you.
We want to ask a question. What's the completion date?
Actually, we will be, the original completion date was August, July, August of next year, but it seems like the couple of days that we had extra, we might be able to finish that up a little bit early, but we plan on going into the next school year with everything done. And we do work, we continue to work on athletics, and with limited seating with that, and of course, the east-west end is only about quarter capacity online, so we continue to do that and just kind of hit it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair, commission, thank you. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion regarding the consent counter items. Approve the consent counter.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff Faber seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent counter items, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion approving the mayor's appointment of Tim Goulins to the Hammond County Emergency Communications Board.
I'll move it, chairman.
Thomas Stoddy has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Randy DeBoer has seconded the motion. All those in favor, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion approving the mayor's appointment of Tim Goulins to the Hammond County Emergency Communications Board.
I'll move it, chairman.
Thomas Stoddy has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Randy DeBoer has seconded the motion. All those in favor, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is approved. Now, we're at the public comment section, and we have three people who have requested five minutes to speak at this time, and so we will first of all, recognize Ed Noggin.
My name's Ed Nigre. I live at forty-nine eighty-one Cameron Road, Morristown, Tennessee. I would like to address the ten-day rule. That ten-day rule enables commissioners, first to ask questions, second to research, to know exactly what you're voting on and how it affects the public. Second part, it enables us, the citizens, to do the same thing. I don't know about the rest of you, but I still work, and I don't have, I'll just sit there and look in my leisure time. So it gives the ability for both of us. It gives transparency, it gives public awareness, and that is exactly what it should be. Would like to see more documents posted on the Hamlin County website to give each and every one of us the opportunity to know exactly what is going on. I would like to see more people answer questions, and I would like to see you respond. I'd like to take the time to thank April, Neesmith, and Moore. They responded to me as well as Mr. Hall. Mine did not, so thank you. Thank you for having that respect and attitude. First and second of all, I'd like to address the jail deal. I know you tell me it's a done deal, but it's thirty-five million dollars.
You requested only the ten-day rule for five minutes.
I think I did that because of your lives.
I've got it right here in front of me. Now, you can address a ten-day rule, and then at the end of the meeting, you want five minutes to address the wasteful spending.
I can do that. Thank you for your time. I appreciate each one of these attendants. I appreciate that you're looking directly at me and you don't look away, and you speak to me and lots of others. Would like to take this opportunity to give our condolences to Randy. We have been down that road, and we request first and last, so that's my not easy road to handle.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll recognize Linda Noah, who requested five minutes to speak on several items that are on the agenda, six C, eight A, A B, and eight C.
My name is Linda, O A twenty-three forty-three, Joe Stevens Road. Obviously, the first and perhaps the most important in the big scheme of things is the ten-day rule. It is just common sense, it's wise, it's prudent, it's what I think most of you would do and probably do.
That's something counter, ma'am. Ms. Noah, you're violating the rules of this body with that sign around your neck. You need it to remove it this time.
The necklace.
I see save ten million dollars and leave the jail as a placard.
Says save thirty million.
Well, okay.
That's what my necklace says, is save thirty million.
It's not permitted in this body. You can look at the rules, you know the rules as well as I do. Here, and if you want to do this, no placards, banners, or signs, and I consider that to be a placard around your neck, not a necklace.
You consider this a placard.
How many of you here, commissioners, consider this to be a necklace? Raise your hand. Is it a necklace?
It's a necklace, isn't it?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is it banner also?
Anyway, go move on.
No, we're not going to move on until it's removed. You're defined, other row of this body, it is a placard, and so we're not going to move on until it's removed. I'm sorry.
What if I had this on my shirt?
Well, you have to change your shirt.
I'm just asking, would that be okay?
The very same thing would apply, you know, if you went into a voting booth to vote, you might have to put another covering over.
This is not a partisan issue like voting and voting.
Well, I still, that is a violation of the rules of this body. Let the record, let the record show that Ms. Noah can confuse the byproducts of the rules of this body. And maybe our attorney can add that to the rule when we go to court on October the first. Continue. The record is shown.
Which is a refuse.
I don't think we should let her continue with that placard on. I don't think we should let her continue with that placard on. We could have some of the officers take the placard off, take her out, and remember.
Do you want to remove her? She can give you her placard, and she can stay. If she doesn't give you the placard, then remove her from the court, please.
You're unbelievable. No, I'll hold it, that's all right.
No, you give it to him. Give it to him.
You're confiscating my necklace.
Okay.
Which Mr. Shipley said was a necklace.
You can pick that placard up on your way out. Thank you, Mrs. May. You may continue.
And since you brought up our court date, everybody needs to realize that court date is about trying to prevent me or anyone else
That's not on the agenda.
From taking meetings.
It's not on the agenda.
You brought it up.
It's not on the agenda.
You brought it up.
Well, if you want to screen all the items that you have indicated you need to keep on the agenda items, please.
Of course, you said just be as specific as possible. You didn't say you'd be strictly limited to whatever you write down on that request. You might remember that, too. On the ten-day rule, it's wise, prudent, and nothing more than common sense to have at least ten days to review a contract, a public contract involving public money or public agreements like your animal control contract. On A V, the bid award for commissioning services. I understand you got your information this morning sometime, and now you're being asked to vote, and I know exactly what you'll do. If the ten-day rule stays in place, you'll vote to waive it, because you always do that. You don't follow your own rules. You're taking me to court over a rule, and you don't follow your own rules. Must be nice to be the dictator and king, and be able to make rules, violate rules, change rules, do whatever you want to do. But on the commissioning services, and I know, Mr. Shipley, you don't answer questions. Of course, you don't answer questions. Half the time, you don't know the answer. But these are the questions I would like somebody to ask. When did Mosley first suggest a commissioning agent for the Jail Justice Center? You had never heard of that or mentioned that until suddenly this RFP goes out. Are we required to have a commissioning agent? And finally, I believe, if I'm right, H E A is the recommended commissioning agent? Whoever is the recommended commissioning agent, are they licensed in the state of Tennessee? I'm going to go to see the boroughal construction company contracts. I'm not going to say too much about that because I await seeing what is said when that particular contract comes up for a vote. On the Hale Development Project, the plan was changed, that five-hundred-thousand-dollar essentially shell maintenance building was eliminated, and that helped you eliminate the detention pond. My question is this, you reduced the parking, and you got rid of the maintenance building, so you wouldn't be taking up, I think it was two acres, which would require the detention pond. Is this an attempt to do it in a two-step? Right now, we don't do two acres, so we don't have to do a detention pond. Is the intention later to come back and do the maintenance building, and again, you won't be, you know, disturbing two acres? I'm just asking. I don't know if that's the intention. I know often that is what I'm see done up here. We just take a little bite of the apple and then come back later to get a bigger bite of the apple. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But as I say, I don't expect anyone to ask the questions because you're very careful not to provide information to people. That's why I end up having to go to Mayor Britton's office and get documents. So yeah, I know the answers to the questions, except for the two-acre one. So we'll see if the answers come out when the commissioning agent bid award comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noah. We also have a request from Mrs. Gollington to speak on the ten-day rule, so Mrs. Gollington, you're recognized.
I've given requests. I don't know how that came apart. I intended to speak on the ten-day rule, but I didn't send the request in.
You want to read your own document that you sent to?
Rutherford.
It says ten-day rule.
Are you talking about Gollington or Rutherford?
Rutherford, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Rutherford, Gollington is not right back. I'm talking about Rutherford.
You don't have to be.
I'm talking about that.
Neither.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys.
Take that thing off, so I can do you.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Elizabeth Rutherford. I live at three forty-nine Massanady Road, and first of all, I would like to thank Commissioner Goins for answering my email. You were very respectful in that email, and I appreciate that. Well, the disagreement that I have with abolishing the ten-day rule, suspending it, or whatever motion that we're going to see tonight, is first of all, we're talking about a contract that has binding legal and business implications. We shouldn't just rush into these things. I'm sure we have amazing people that are reviewing them, competent people, but the issue of human error still stands. Every one of us has probably been the victim of inconvenient autocorrect at some point in the process. Everybody that texts has seen that happen. So why would you rush into things, and instead of taking the whole ten days to consider a contract to review it, why would we want to rush into these things? Why wouldn't we want more people to have time to examine them and point out potential flaws in those contracts? Because the more eyes you have on those documents, the less likely that you are to want to have an issue. Because just imagine, imagine one misplaced digit and number figures. Imagine what that would implicate for taxpayers. Throughout history, the, excuse me, government contract errors has costed taxpayers billions of dollars, with the government whole. This is not something we need to take lightly, ladies and gentlemen. This is something that needs to be taken very seriously, and research takes time. Take it from a graduate student. I have to do research all the time, and it is very, very time-consuming, and I'm sure that each and every one of you has day jobs, has families, and everything else that takes up your time. So why wouldn't we want to give you enough time to research it? Why wouldn't we want to give the public enough time to research it and address this body? Another issue with this is the fact that public notice, I mean, this is my first time addressing the commission, and it is very difficult for people to get off work or to make arrangements to come up here, and with less than ten days to do that, what options are you giving the public? And I noticed that at the beginning of, when you opened the commission meeting, that you said, you, excuse me, you said that it was based on just contracts, if that's correct. Now, it took me till this week to figure out that it was just contracts, because upon reviewing the committee packets and the commission packets, it wasn't clear exactly what the ten-day rule was, why it was important, or why it was wanting to be done away with. Now, Commissioner Goins had mentioned that it's costing the county money. What I challenge each and every one of you to do is find an example, a verifiable example, of how this ten-day rule staying in place actually caused the taxpayers money. Do we have an example? Do we have an actual verifiable example that we can, like, look to? Now, it's my understanding that there's pending litigation against the county. That has nothing to do with the ten-day rule. That has to do with the jail issue, which has been an ongoing issue. Ten-day rule doesn't affect necessarily what litigation was about. I mean, they're not litigating about the ten-day rule, obviously. So when we look at this issue, why would we take time away from the commissioners and from the public to do research and to make sure that the best choice is being made for the taxpayers of Hamlin County? I mean, it makes good sense to have people verify this information. It makes good sense to have more eyes on a document, because the more people is looking at it, the less likely you're going to have an error. I mean, even with the best spell checkers, the best word document, I mean, there's still errors, and all that the people want to see is just transparency. We want to be able to come forward and talk to you guys. We want to be able to address our concerns and not be labeled as people that are just trying to cause trouble. I mean, there are so many different things in Hamlin County to do. If we were just looking for something to occupy our time, we would not be here before you today, and I can assure you that a no vote is definitely warranted when it comes to doing the way of the ten-day rule. Thank you all for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Now, we would entertain comments from anyone else concerning any items that are on the agenda. You'll have three minutes. This gentleman right over here stood first. Oh, oh, he's here now, so he can get out. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on the main route, he low, I live at twenty-eight, page six, Sandy Clay Circle, Morristown. I'd like to address the ten-day rule of learning a lot being here tonight, but I would like to say I learned a lot from this lady here that just spoke concerning the ten-day rule, and I would like to see it kept in place because I think it is, as she stated, I couldn't state it any better. It is a good rule, and it's to protect the taxpayers of Hamlin County, so, you know, I'm not going to take that too much time. Well-spoken, but I would like to see the ten-day rule, what I learned tonight, kept in place. Thank you.
David Ward Wood, we'll have a room in Morristown. I want to talk to you all about where you have the jail on the agenda tonight. I had, a little over a couple of weeks ago, one of your ex-missioners, which I'm not going to call out and put them on the spot, admitted that this jail construction has gotten out of control. If your car's rolling off, you don't run behind it and push it, the first thing you're going to do is get it under control, get it stopped, and then go where you're going to go, under control. People come up there and ask questions, they never get answers. Y'all wait everything, try to push contacts through. The mistrust that you're showing from the people, y'all are the ones causing it. People ask questions, they can't get answers. I mean, how do you expect people to feel about that? It does seem like y'all are trying to do something dirty. Y'all can spot this. You can. Hey, slow down here, let's figure out what's going on, let's get it under control, keep the public informed, answer their questions. People send you emails, it's all over the social media, they can't advise. Communicate with the people. If you want their trust, open up, tell them then, because they're not going to trust y'all if you don't start opening up. If you don't start showing them that you are listening to them, you're sitting up here, you're hearing, but people don't fuck you. Listening. And you're not going to get no trust out of the people. This is going to continue on until you spot what kind of does, it's like we're some kind of enemies. We're concerned. Address our concerns. Then we might start showing y'all something different from us, too, that we show some trust in you. But right now, y'all are not earning that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Karen Arwood, fifteen oh one L Road. I just want to, about trust.
Make the phone closer.
Oh, is that better?
There you go.
Alright, there we go. Alright, did we get the name and everything? Cool, alright, trust. There, I'll just lay it out the way I see it. There's been a line drawn in the dirt. And I honestly, I feel like the commission of fourteen people sitting up here have drawn the line and then various of you, when you have people of the public with their constitutional rights to address their grievances, pose questions, et cetera, that you continue to draw and make that line bigger and bigger. I want to remind each and every one of you, if you sit up there in your seats and ignore me or, and think that you're the boss, any of you, you're not the boss. You guys are elected officials by who? The citizens, the people on this side. You work for us, not the other way around. And I'll be doggone if I sit here and I get talked to the way that Ms. Nolly was talked to just a little while ago. And in the same situation, I don't want by George stand my ground.
You're on the verge of getting talked to that way simply because your comments are not on any item on the agenda. They're more, oh, again.
The ten, the ten day rule?
Keep your comments on items on the agenda, please.
Thank you for the pleas, I appreciate it. But no, I will, I will follow up with the ten day rule. Yes, the ten day rule has created quite a stir. It is to give, knowing you, if you honestly represent the people of your district, you to look over and review, find any errors, come up with questions, please. I, very rarely, more and more questions have been asked for clarification. Just because somebody else tells you something, and I think I pointed that out before, they'll, they'll tell you what they want you to hear. There is the rest of the story, there is the other side, there is more information. And do take time. This is not a teen, I'm saying, none of this are tiny little contracts that, oh, well, no big deal. Take time, review them, ask questions, ask questions about a lot of things. We really, we is, we're just concerned about discounting our taxes in the future. Let's just do it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Bonnie Gollington, three seventeen Stubblefield Street, Whitesburg. I wanted to address the ten day rule. I think it's a bomb rule that you would want to do away with for any reason. Because all that shows us is that you folks are hiding stuff. There's things that you don't want us to know or that you think we can't comprehend because we're stupid. We're not. But we feel like you work for us. Your job is to take care of us, not to tell us that we're stupid or we don't understand. And a little lady, you sit down, we'll take care of this, that's what we do. It doesn't work that way. And Ms. Rutherford really hit the nail on the head at all counts of the ten day rule. It shouldn't be done away with for any reason, by anybody, unless they have something to hide. And I know you're going to call me on it, so I will sit down, but I think it's also admissible the way you talk to Ms. Nolly and Ms. Arwood.
You may, you may be seated.
Yeah, I know.
And, and, uh, go ahead for a plaque, please. Now, I'm, I'm going to take notice tonight, you may, from now on, you're not going to be able to enter the courtroom with your plaques, you understand?
I didn't enter it with my plaque, it was delivered.
Well, whoever delivered it, uh, you'll be going, you'll be going out of the courtroom next time. Because the rules are very clear, they're all there.
Mark Lockhart, forty-three eighty-one Hibiscus Drive. I'd like to address, address this ten day rule. I'm part of this small unhappy group that makes mountains out of mobiles, according to Mr. Stapp. I think we need to keep the ten day rule in place so that commissioners and the public have time to study the contracts under consideration. Why would you not hold ten days to study a contract? That's worth millions of dollars. Why would you have it in front of you in five minutes and be expecting to vote on it? That's your stupidity. How does doing away with this rule cost the taxpayers money and eliminate senseless lawsuits, as Mr. Stapp says? I don't understand that. Now, public notices are published by the mayor's office, not the commissioners. So if there's only seven, eight, or nine days between the committee meeting and the commission meeting, that's on the mayor, not on the commissions, and he should be held accountable for that. What senseless lawsuits are going to be eliminated by doing away with this ten day rule? I think that by doing away with the ten day rule, the county would be subject to more lawsuits because the public will not be able to, uh, be informed or given ten days to study and research the contracts ever before you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there's anyone else who wishes to address this commission, yes, sir?
My name is Tony Strazulo, I live at six oh nine East Louise Avenue. Tonight, I stand in firm with the current commissioners to discuss a very important subject of procedural due process. The ten day rule is to, is intended to ensure the government acts in a fundamentally fair and reasonable manner when making decisions that affect private individuals. We must have this rule in effect to ensure fairness, adequate notice on biased decisions made, avoidance of experted contacts, and opportunity to be heard and the right to present evidence, prompt assistance making in a written discussion based on the records supported by reasons of findings and facts which will be lost without the ten day rule that our past commissioners voted upon and approved many years ago. Thank you.
Please comment.
One hundred eighty-one fifty West Porter, Howard Tennessee. Vengeance is mine, as saith the Lord, I will repay. Please keep the ten day rule.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? We'll proceed off with our business. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Randy DeBoer to the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six A, the approval of the monthly checks, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Thomas Stoddy. Any discussion? Hearing that, then call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Tater Ward.
Yep.
The motion is approved. Item six B one, Hamlin County Department of Education Budget Amendment, increase of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and three dollars and eleven cents. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. So, Bobby Hahn second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing that, call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Tater Ward.
Yep.
Fourteen A zero eight.
The motion is approved.
Item six B two, Hamlin County Department of Education Budget Amendment number three, increase of two hundred fifty-one thousand six seventy-two, and I put that in the form of a motion. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All, call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Tater Ward.
Yes.
Fourteen A zero eight.
Motion is approved.
Item six B three, Fund one oh one, Circuit Court clerk, for four hundred and seventeen, uh, four, four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars for a sheet feeder, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Jeff Baker. Any discussion? Hearing that, call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed. Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Tim, Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Tater Ward.
Yep.
Fourteen A zero eight.
Motion is approved. Item six B four, Fund one oh one, Other Social, Cultural, and Recreational, ten thousand five sixty, and that's for custodial work and security, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thomas Stoddy, second the motion. Uh, any discussion? Hearing that, then call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Tater Ward.
Yep.
Fourteen A zero eight.
The motion is approved.
Item six C, Public Official Bonds for Scotty Long, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Chris Cudshaw second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing that, call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
Yes.
Chris Cudshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Stoddy.
Yes.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner. Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Ali Northline.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Howard Chipling.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Howard, or Tater Ward.
Yep.
Fourteen A zero eight.
Motion is approved. Item six D, Animal Control Service, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Please second it. Tim Horner second it. Any discussion?
Wait. Randy, what's this going to cost? We've talked about it earlier, let everybody know what it's going to cost. Our portion is going to be, and when I say our portion, Hamlin County's portion is going to be a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars per year for operations. It's now one fifty. Yes. It'll cost thirty thousand more. The differential is that they will have the official power to do something about what happens with the situation. Or the ACO officer, we're going to hire two of them. When they, when they go out to check on the dogs, get some kids, and the parents give them a hard time, they can call in the police. Correct. With the digitized, they can come out and take yours anyway. Yes. We don't have that now. Yeah. But this ACO officer will not go out and look at barking dogs or dogs that's running loose. There is a definition in your packet on what would be a call after hours and what would not be. I got a question. The, uh, animal control office, it's sort of up here where we take animals too. Are they going to be able to refuse any dogs? I don't know the answer to that question.
Here, break. There.
Their policy will be on, on owner surrenders, on owner surrenders if they don't have space, then they will refuse. But not animals that the animal control officer will.
And how much will we pay it for these, for these turds?
For them, it'll be a hundred and twenty thousand of our dollars, and then the city can gather it.
No matter how many dogs we take out there, or no matter how long they have to be there?
Correct. Or how much medical that are required even, so. Where, where, I think, Tim, what this, what this arrangement does is, is it creates a animal control division and gets us a place to start, and then we can, we can fine tune it as it goes. But we, we got to, um, we've got to get this started and, and then see how it works and see how the relationships work, because this is something that, that's not going in.
We've had, we've had animal control issues for twelve years, I don't know. But, uh, it's just the money we're spending, it's a lot of taxpayer dollars that we're putting.
I understand. Now, this will also, Tim, this will also help the sheriff's department as well because during the hours that, that animal control is, is working, they won't be called out to animal, animal cases or animal calls as, as long as, unless the animal control officer needs backup. The animal control officer under this arrangement will have the authority to cite offenders or, um, charge. They can enforce the law where currently they have to call the police or the sheriff's department to do that. So that, that will help the sheriff's department.
Any other discussion?
Let me ask a question. So, we understand the humane society is going to be like a housing place for dogs and animals.
They will operate.
Have nothing to do with picking them up or doing anything with them, does that work?
Correct, they will be, they will operate an animal shelter.
Okay, so once you have the guys go out and pick this animal up, wherever it may be, then they take them to the animal shelter and drop them off there?
Yes.
Do you think about the two o'clock in the morning where there'd be someone out there?
They'll have a pen and for housing for, um, the ACOs to, to deposit in.
So you think that we're, we're going to have our own little place to keep them in a temporary situation then?
No, no, we, any, we will not operate a shelter. As, as far as manpower, we will not operate a shelter. The humane society will operate the shelter and there will be, um, policies and procedures for the ACOs to, to take dogs and drop them off there at the shelter.
So let me figure for myself this. So when somebody has a problem, they're going to call nine one one, I assume? And nine one one personally determine whether it's a emergency or whether it can be taken care of next day or something like that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then once that is done, uh, who, who, who's in charge? Of the two guys or the one guy that we're going out, the people doing this stuff? Who, who, is, is the sheriff department doing it or is it you or?
It, I will be, I will do the hiring and firing of, of the animal control supervisor. And then supervisor and I will hire the, the second ACO. There'll be two full-time employees. Now, the, for animal control, uh, they'll report to me. For any law enforcement duties that they have to do, if there's a situation that comes up where they have to, um, invoke some of their authority as a law enforcement officer, then they would have to, they'll be responsible to the sheriff for that.
So are they going, is nine one one going to call you and say, uh, there you go, shit, somebody out here sent such a dress and something like that, no problem?
No, then, uh, let, let's, two situations. When animal control officers are on duty, then nine one one will dispatch the ACOs to the call. Now, when ACO officers are not on duty, then they will have a, a list, and it's in your packet, a, a list of, of criteria for when. Now, when ACO officers are not on duty, then they will have a, a list, and it's in your packet, a, a list of, of criteria for when to call, uh, an animal control officer out. Let's say a roaming dog, okay, that does not threaten anybody, poses no threat, that's not, that doesn't meet the criteria to call an ACO out after hours. Um, uh, an, an animal, let's say, uh, that's hit and killed by a car, now is killed, then that's not, uh, grounds to call the, the animal patrol officer. Now, an animal who's hit and injured, that meets the criteria for a call out. Um, so what would happen, i- in some cases would be, uh, nine-one-one, and when ACOs are not on duty, will, um, notify police or sheriff, and they will go, and then will they go to the scene, they will determine whether, uh, an ACO needs to be called.
Okay, so once a little child gets hit by a coyote or an, an animal, you know, so if you're gonna have to get that animal up for you, if you can't get it, I guess you just go and shoot it from there, if you can't get it, uh, if you get a coyote, uh, and then he's gonna determine whether that coyote, or it had rabies or something like that, and what's the child gonna do, is she gonna go to and take, or, who's gonna, who's gonna take care of that situation, I mean?
The health department.
To the, the, now we're not doing it by.
The health department does rabies investigations, so it'll be the health department.
He's trying to, uh, maybe for all the questions.
Who's gonna oversee this animal issue after so we don't get into the situation we got into several years ago?
The, the humane.
Dogs and selling the profit dollars to the county?
The, the humane society has board directors, and, and the board directors will make, what runs, hires the director that runs it. Um, the county has two seats on that board, the city has, right now, three seats on that board, and so that's, that's who runs.
The humane society will continue doing the adoption and, and keeping on that.
That's correct, yes.
And, uh, they'll also then, uh, to control the animals that they have in their place.
Correct, yes.
Any more discussion?
One, yes, I'm sorry, um, you, you request, I was just reading that these hours of operation, regular business hour, what is gonna be their regular schedule, are both of them gonna be going at even time, or do you, you know, you said something about the career?
There's not, there's, there's not, we, we don't have set hours yet, but I guess my vision is that the two ACOs will not, their, their shifts will overlap, but not our framework.
And, and in that, then, so if someone calls about that roaming dog, if they're actually on duty, they can go.
Yes, if they're on duty, yes.
That's what I get.
And then if, let's say there's, there's a, a dog at large and, and not posing any threat to anybody, then, um, uh, the individual will be, uh, the caller is nine-one-one, be encouraged to call the, the answering machine at animal control, they'll leave a message in the next day, the animal patrol officer will go out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, do we continue, first, one, one thing, do, do we continue, uh, supporting the humane society until we have these people trained and then are in effect, and it may take six months to do all that, get them on, on board, is that correct?
Yes, we'll, yes, we will support the, the humane society through this, yes.
All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion for animal control services will vote yes, those who oppose it will vote no, call or roll please.
Jeff Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
To, Thomas Stowey?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Ali Narwhal?
No.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Chipley?
Yes.
Jim Stat?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yes.
Twelve years to the end.
The motion is approved.
Item six E, a motion to set aside the ten-day rule, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, can I, uh, address, Mr.? Let's get, get a motion on the floor first. We need someone to move to approve the, uh, ten-day rule, because the chairman is uncomfortable in doing so.
Some of them.
All right, uh, Tim Goins moved if they approve the ten-day rule, or is there, uh, uh, rescind the ten-day rule, is there a second?
I'm saying.
Okay, it's been seconded by, uh, Commissioner Stat. Okay, now we're ready for discussion.
I feel the ten-day rule needs to stay in effect. Citizens of the county have the right to know ten days prior to a county commission meeting, all business that is on the agenda.
Okay, anyone else?
I think the ten-day rule will stay in effect, it's been here for a long time, and we had fourteen commissioners all voted for it, and put it together there, and in six years I've been involved with, I've not seen the ten-day rule has caused us any major problems, I don't doubt that, and, uh, I just don't think we need to take it off, I put our people in there, and if we have a situation with emergency, we, we have, we can always go to West Wing and, and do that, we had to do it, uh, so I, I just don't see any sense in taking, stopping right now, so I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, anyone else, stand or?
I think the ten-day rule is a necessity, um, we seem to be trying to bypass the people if we do away with that thing, so, uh, I don't think, keep it in, I think it's, it's very necessary, keeps everybody straight.
Okay.
Uh, in just a few minutes, we're gonna be voting on, uh, commissioner's service, and I was just given this today when I got here, so I, I haven't had this ten days to look at, this is how much it's gonna cost us to do this, to do this community service. We've never got, we've never had a number till now, and they're supposed to be here tonight to explain what it's all about, uh, I, I sent an email, everybody got it, I don't know what this commissioner's services is, but I don't know, and some other commissioners don't know, but this ten-day rule, by this thing that come up in just about ten more minutes, you're gonna be voting on it, you just got this today. So I say keep the, keep the ten-day rule in there, if something comes up where it's an emergency, that we've got to do something right now. Back, uh, three years ago, and y'all huntsmen was there, and Taylor was here, Tim Goins is here, you was here hired, they had an executive board meeting in the damn stars of the West Wing. If some dire emergency that comes up, why can't you do that now, instead of getting rid of a rule that you have since nineteen eighty-nine? And the reason that was put in, David Perkey was appointed mayor, and David Perkey was coming in doing the same thing that we're catching here, coming in throwing stuff down on your desk, and expecting to vote on it. Now, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the lights commissioned, and Taylor was on it, uh, Randy was on it, you were on, and Howard, Joe Huntsman, Taylor Ward was on it, y'all voted unanimously to pass this ten-day rule, and that party didn't want to get rid of it. I say keep your ten-day rule in effect, right on through if you get an emergency, find you another solution to the emergency, 'cause this thing that's coming up, this community, this community, uh, uh, services, you might break a ten-day rule and get it, 'cause we don't have, we haven't. This is gonna come up, this is gonna come up tonight, and it's not an emergency to get this done, this won't take effect for three, two to three years. We've not even signed a contract on the, uh, the art, uh, construction man that's gonna build it, we've not even had a ground breaking over here, so what is the emergency on doing a lot of this, of all this stuff? I rest my case.
Any other discussion?
I do.
Yes.
Ms. Howard, you are exactly correct, because this is my team where our district. I had two people in my district tell me they wanted to keep the ten-day rule, but I had a whole lot more tell me to get rid of it. Don't get mad at the messenger, don't get mad at your commissioner, he does what his, his, his friends tell him to do by the majority vote. Am I correct on that? Why should I listen to the person who barks the loudest when the majority doesn't want that? Now, it's very simple, it's not difficult, to when something comes up, table, just table, it's not difficult, people. If, I've talked to Curtis, Charles Curtis, for the last two, couple of days, he's an individual teaches us how to be county commissioners, and how to do Roberts Rule in construction, other, he said, you know, wait a minute, there are so many more rules out there that you can go by, that you don't have to have a ten-day rule. If it comes to us, and it's that, but if it's that important, if we, we just proved that, we just proved that last month or two with the five hundred thousand dollar bill, you're correct, that bill was five hundred thousand dollars, he said, brought to us in just a spur of the moment. What did we do, we proved it correctly by, what did we do? We sent it back. We just proved that point right there at the end. You elected us to do this job, and we proved that by that right there, it doesn't have to be that way. Now, I listen to the majority of people in my district, I do not listen to those who bark the loudest and who complain the loudest and the most. So, I say do away with ten-day rule, because let me tell you why I'll say. And Mr. Curtis discussed this, there are so many more ways, here's another, here's one other. If you come in here, you're bringing something for us at the spur of the moment, or with this right over here, all you gotta do is, this is the first meeting, here's another way, you can move to the end of the agenda. Make a motion, move to the end of the agenda, get a second, vote on it, majority does, says to do it, move to the end of the agenda, vote on it for a while. You could also move that forty-eight hours away, you don't have to do it right there. A ten-day rule is just one of those items that you can use, a lot of counties do not use them, like it or not, a lot of counties do not use it. It, another way of doing it is we don't have to have, uh, if we come in here and something like this comes up, we can say, let's postpone the meeting for forty-eight hours, meet, say it's Thursday now, we meet Monday night and discuss it and vote on it, then. Listen, the county commission controls this right here by the people, that's right, well, again, I don't go by who barks the loudest, if it's one or two, trust me, I don't, I don't care if I'm, I listen to the people who sit down and discuss it, and know, and know what's going on, you'll be surprised, if people out there contact me, I say, did you know the ten-day rule? They don't even know it, but they complain about it, you know why? Right there's why. Eight percent why, ten percent pictures and ten percent truth, that's what Facebook is, social media's a joke. I say do away with ten-day rule, chairman.
Anybody else who wishes to, uh, address the commission regarding the ten-day rule? If not, then we'll vote on it, uh, a yes, uh, rescind the ten-day rule, a no, uh, keep the ten-day rule, okay?
Correct.
A yes, rescinds the ten-day rule, a no, keeps it, everybody understand that?
A no, keeps it?
A no, in this particular case, the motion is that the ten-day rule is done away with, so a yes, you're going along with the motion, okay? Everybody understand that?
Well, just saying this, typical political term, yes is not when they would get.
The motion is, I, I, it's, it's, Mr. Board, the motion is that we will, uh, resent the ten-day rule, okay? You have to vote yes to rescind it, okay? If you wanna keep it, you vote no, all right?
Comes your time, Taylor, you just vote no.
Call or roll please.
Jeff Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Randy DeBoer?
No.
Thomas Stowey?
No.
Tim Goins?
No.
Bobby Hahn?
No.
Tim Horner?
No.
Joe Huntsman?
No.
Ali Narwhal?
No.
Mike Reed?
No.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Chipley?
Yes.
Jim Stat?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
No.
No.
I have two yes, and twelve no.
Okay, the ten-day, uh, the motion is approved. Okay?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner DeBoer. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Book Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item four B, surplus of items to the Circuit Court Clerk, uh, HL fifty-two, true.
I put that in motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner DeBoer, the surplus is promptly, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Jail, uh, Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A, eight days' request to give the Hell Property Development Project, or accept a formal motion?
We have a motion to approve the, uh, Hell Property Development, uh, project, uh, put it out to bid, is there a second?
Second motion.
Randy DeBoer seconded the motion, any discussion?
Wait, but put it out for bid, yeah, what you say? It's not like I had a bid on it.
It's gonna be a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That was an estimate thing, wasn't it, Mayor?
Yes, it was an estimate.
This is a, this is to get the real bid.
Don't get a real bid and then come back to a real vote.
Any more discussions? And all the votes, please.
Jeff Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stowey?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Ali Narwhal?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Chipley?
Yes.
Jim Stat?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
The motion is approved.
Item HB, General Work for Commissioning Services. At committee meetings, um, we reported back on the RSP for, uh, commissioning services, and we had ten companies that submitted, um, proposals, uh, for, for the business, and, um, in consultation with the project manager, uh, we reduced that to the low five, and then the project manager, uh, Tony Pettit of Urwell Construction, um, negotiated or, uh, really fine-tuned the, the proposals, asked additional questions, and, um, came back with a, a recommendation, um, for, uh, that contract. To answer some of the questions about commissioning services, Tony is here, and, uh, he can go through the process, explain what commission, commissioning services is, uh, he can go through the process they went through and why they've made the recommendation that they have.
So, how do you, John, Erwin Keep around here, so, we got the proposals in, they ranged from three hundred and fifty thousand down to thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, I think that's in your packet there, and they, they were all over the board, if you looked at the low number, and you added up what their cost was, it gets closer to the fifty thousand, fifty-six thousand dollars, but, um, you had required services that would be needed now. But, um, you had required services that would be needed now. Commissioning services is a quality control item and it allows you to take your building knowing that your water pumps are all flowing in the same direction or when you go to do maintenance on your VAB valves or HVAC units, that you have room in the building, in the ceilings. Or where they're located, you can go through the access panels. Um, I'm thinking through what I've been through in my experience with commissioners and what they've called. But they'll catch things like that to, where at the end of the project, that building is functioning. Uh, the biggest part they do is function testing of their equipment. And this is for electrical and mechanical, which includes the plumbing, mechanical and the electric. One of the things that you, that's in this proposal, or this response to the proposal, is actually developing some specifications for the front end documents. Some of it allows the architect, the designer to go out and bid the project. So, that's probably why there's a somewhat urgent clock on it. It's gotta be out there so they can develop their, um, specifications into the, um, into the documents that the designers really, that way it's, they're in there and they're reviewing. They're also reviewing and with comments, the designers, consultants, the mechanical, electrical engineers, and they'll be looking over that too, recommending things if they see. So, commissioning is kind of quality control thing. It allows you, when you have your building, that it's in need of maintenance and everything's working right. In, in, perfect example, I have a big cooling tower on the project one time and we did not figure out what was the matter. We didn't get work on it. Three to four months after they were occupied, figured out one pump was pumping this way and one pump was going that way and what work is, is fighting each other. Commissioners prevent that. They make sure everything's functioning properly, so. And, and they do a whole lot of it and it's, uh, it's, uh, it's helpful to the project.
Do you have any questions, have questions?
It sounds like to me is that the project, project manager is pretty much the one that would be doing that. Can he not do the same thing, the same job? Uh, well, I don't have the expertise to know when it's the CFMs or, or the, the needed CFM to look at it. I'm not an electrical engineer. I'm not a capital engineer. So, if you're hiring those engineers, they're actually gonna make sixteen visits to this site to look at this stuff, do inspections and do tests. Well, we ain't broke ground yet. When do we get, when do they start paying us? You, you'll need, uh, there'll be an initial payment when he reviews the specifications and write specifications. He will review their documents and, and, and the designer's documents and then he'll allow, he'll, he'll have a bill there. But his main focus on the job will be within the last eight months of the project. And it can't be.
Which should be over two years now, right?
Yep.
Meanwhile, we're gonna pay him to tell you.
Pardon me?
We're gonna pay him something to tell you.
Well, he's, he's doing, he, one function that he's requested to do here is, is develop a set of front end documents that, so when this project goes to bid, that mechanical, electrical, uh, contractors will know that there's gonna be commissioning on the project and their function and they gotta participate in this function testing.
How long will that bid delay if it comes about you, you think?
I'm thinking the, the schedule right now is around November. But it's out for bid.
Is commissioning now, does it have anything to do with value engineering?
Uh, no. It'll be just, it'll take the designer's consultants' equipment and take a real quick review of that. It's not quick, it's pretty in depth and, and make sure their, that their calculations are correct. And then it just takes what they have and make sure it's operating properly.
So, they're a watch dog?
They're a quality controller. Yeah. And if you, if a con, and there's, you know, a lot of things that are on these documents are diametrically indicated on the drawings, but they don't tell you how you rotate it around. So, you may put something right up against a wall, a firewall, and you can't get to it to surface it. So, that's another thing they do. Typical stuff like that.
Or the project manager determines whether that person's qualified to do what we need to do at, at thirty thousand or fifty thousand or three hundred thousand.
Well, uh, yeah.
You.
Yeah. I've, I've checked references and, and, and the designers actually work with him, not just personally. Before we decide that, maybe the top three choices are, are we gonna get it, get it before we vote or something like that, maybe top that? I've talked to, I've talked to all, I've talked to all five of them.
When we get down to two or three, the sign of them like that, are we gonna?
No, Joe. Joe, they have a recommendation here.
I have a recommendation on it.
AGA, and that brings us to one of the questions there in public comment is AGA licensing in the state of Tennessee.
Your requirements say in the agenda that they're not to, they have to be licensed before they start their work. And AGA is, uh, I do not know whether they're, have their license yet or not. I have a statement in their proposal response that says that Anthony, and I can recall the guy's license, he's, he's in the process of getting his license in the state of Tennessee.
So, you don't think they've gotten the license yet and we won't vote on it? I think we need to find out if we got a license or not first. He might not be the guy you end up with. You know, QC, quality control, that's, uh, when, when picture tubes come in to build a TV, you don't use the quality control till you get your picture tube in your hand.
But your, your requirements in your RFP.
They're not maybe three, two, three years down the road?
I apologize. You, you made an answer just when I left the room. Wouldn't you recommend that the, the?
I would recommend, you know, if you, if you got the ten day rule in fact, I would try to get it within ten days from, uh, if you've got your contracts today, within ten days today.
So, you, you want the service box?
Yes.
And, and to clarify, this, uh, this figure that's being negotiated, that is the figure, not cost plus?
No, it's fifty thousand. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things in there that we're told, sixteen trips. It's, it's, there's a contract that stipulates their performance duties and all that. And it's, it's, it's fifty thousand, three hundred and some odd dollars that we've got here, so.
Very, very nice, but you, you couldn't hire this guy to do it, with his license, right?
It says in the agenda that he's not got it before he starts work, the contracts void.
So, we need to make sure he's licensed before we approve, approve his project.
Did you hear what he said? No, Wayne, he said he would be voided if he doesn't get his license. So, what?
Contracts void if he didn't have his license.
So, we'd be back day one, ten, and vote on somebody else. Well, I guess, and that's, that's about it.
What's, what? One, one of the jobs that, of a project manager, which Tony's our project manager, is he's the one with the expertise in this area. There's nobody among us that has that expertise. That's why we turned this over, uh, to Tony after we got done with the RFP process and we got the proposals back. Then we reviewed the ten and immediately knocked out the top five, which were all over a hundred thousand dollars. And then, that there, just like what Tony said, there were still prices all over the place and, and some ambiguity and, and some, some confusion on exactly some of the responses. And, and so Tony did a due diligence that needs to be done in something like this and contacted all of them and some, had them submit answers to some specialized questions and some, some specific questions about their proposal. So, this isn't something that has just happened overnight. This process started, um, over ten days ago. When we got the proposals and opened the proposals and saw that we had ten and then that we needed expertise in the area, we turned to the project manager. He did his work last week as far as the questioning of the, uh, uh, proposers. Did negotiations and has come with the recommendation. This isn't something that's just happened overnight. We've worked on this for, well, we worked on the, the RFP for over a month. And, uh, so the, the person here with the expertise in this area is the one who's making the recommendation. And AGA is, is the company, uh, Mosley has, has, well, Brian Payne, who is the chief architect in our job, has worked with AC, he, HE. H, H E A. Uh, before. And it's a reputable firm. It's one that, that he's familiar with and, um, he recommends. And it's one of the things in, in this project that may not happen on some others is, i- if, if you listen to Tony and what he's talking about, and you think about the process we're going through, is we're making sure that the plans that hit the street with the contractor is the best possible plan it can be. That's why we're having three sets of eyes on it. You know, we have, we have Mosley, we have Mosley's group number two, we have the project manager looking at it. And then this group would also, we're asking them to look at the design, the mechanical design, to make sure that it's the best that it can be. And that will save us money in the long run to avoid change, change orders. So, we're trying to get this thing right before it ever hits the street and not come back later and, and say, well, we missed it and we need a change order.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I, if our project manager is making this recommendation, uh, I mean, he's smarter about the stuff than we are. I wouldn't make a motion if we go ahead and.
We need to take it to the chairman of the jail study committee.
You're right.
He's typically the one that will make the motion.
Yes.
Since it's coming from his committee. Any more discussion?
Yes.
I, I yield, I yield to, uh, Mr. Urwell and, I mean, Tony with Urwell with his expertise. I, I, I agree. But in a lot of everything is, uh, well, how can we operate and stay within the ten days so we don't have to deal with, uh, nonsense?
Tell me what, uh, what would you do?
I had a question on the front of these minutes. Because I had a question to the chairman and I was waiting on him.
I thought you said.
I think that, that it is a contract and the motion that is made, you need to include a statement that you set aside the ten day rule.
Agreed.
Okay? Did that answer your question?
Here it is.
Okay.
What will you do, Tony, if this, I don't know what, this, this man's gonna be, he's gonna make sixteen visits to us and four follow-ups? What is, what is the problem if he's not licensed in Tennessee?
It's not, it's not a problem. It's not a problem according to your RFP. Your RFP says before he starts work, he's gotta be licensed in the state of Tennessee. He's in the process of obtaining that license.
I, I got a small question. What if he can't get it?
His, his contract's void according to the.
And then what do we do?
We have to go to the second recommendation.
Second recommendation. Hold on a minute here.
But he is working on getting his license.
I don't like to make the set aside the ten day rule and vote on this because we're not gonna be using it for two, three years.
Okay, any more discussion?
But that was not my, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just, that was not my understanding of what he just said. I, I thought he said that we need to plan this now so that we can avoid those problems on the back end. Is that correct, Mr. Tony?
That's what I'm saying.
No, he's number two.
You were saying that we need to do this now to avoid the, uh, mistakes that we're going to make in the drawings. Is it not?
The designer's working feverishly trying to get the bid down on the street. Uh, and it would be better to have it on the street before the first year, than after the first year. If you can make it, that'd be great. So, uh, there's a lot of work going, going on right now about trying to make sure we got estimates and everything like that. One of the things that he has to, the commission agent has to do, pardon your agreement, is to review and develop, review the design and develop spec, uh, specifications specific to the commissioning. What allows him, it allows the subcontractors and the contractor to know that there's commissioning on the job and he's gonna be in there telling them that the pumps are gonna be tested and there, because it takes a certain amount of time for the, for the, uh, trade contractors to make sure they walk through that commission. It's not an exorbitant thing, but if they just, they have to go with that commitment, the commissioning agent and, and follow along with the testing.
So, it's not two or three years before we need that information?
Oh, no. It'll be, it will happen, a little bit will happen in the beginning and then within about twelve months or something else, you'll start seeing them more active in the project. There are also review specifications as, as the cementals are coming through. The contractors are submitting data on what they're using. And then we'll send a copy to the commissioners. They sit there and review it and make sure it's in that spec too. So, you got another set of eyes, not only with mechanical engineers that are reviewing it, but, and me, but also that commissioner. He'll check the CFMs and high efficiency rates and air exchanges and he'll know more about that than I will.
Commissioner Horne, you ready to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready for it. You work with contractors, right?
Yes, sometimes for them, sometimes against them, yes.
If we haven't hit the contractor yet, we got, we're getting a cart before the horse.
This is not a contractor. This is a service provider.
Service, but you can't do anything till you get the contractor to show the drawings.
If you, if you would listen, he said that before that contractor, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking right now. He said before that contractor can give you a price, he needs to know what this commissioning agent is gonna require of him. So, the contract, you can't hire it until you get this man. But now, on that point, my opinion, if we just voted down the way with ten day rule on contracts, what's it gonna say about us if we go to contract, does it sound different if we did that? You know, we contradict ourselves. But he said, and he knows well as I do, there's conditions on the contract that you have to give a bid for. You can't give a complete bid till you have all those conditions. Till you know everything you have to do, you can't give a set price. And no contractor will do it if there's gonna be compensances. If this guy's gonna be there and you're gonna have to do what he says later, he's not gonna give you a price. You tell him what he's gonna have to do. But, like I said, but on the other hand, I don't think we need to go today, in my opinion. Because ten day rule is just set aside or you just decide not to set it aside and it's a contract.
Well, uh, Commissioner, uh, noting, uh, we have in the past, and we will continue to have to do so, due to the nature of the contract, there will be times when we will have to set aside the ten day rule. And that, in, in, uh, this project with the jail, there's gonna be several situations that will.
That might be.
Whether we like it or not.
That'll be the information, but.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, Commissioner Horne, uh, we're waiting for a motion.
Okay, to award, uh, commissioning services and set aside the ten day rule.
Second. It's been moved, it's been seconded by Mr. Hahn. Uh, any, uh, we've had plenty of discussion on this call, roll please.
Jeff Baker.
No.
Chris Ketchum.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoney.
No.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson.
No.
Ali Norwood.
No.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
No.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Taylor Ward. Six no's and eight yess.
Eight yess, okay?
Eight yess.
All right. The motion is approved. Okay.
I am AC Urwell Construction Company contract. I put that form of a motion to reaffirm the contract.
We have a motion to reaffirm the contract with Urwell Construction happening. Uh, is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? Hearing that, call the roll, please.
Jeff Baker.
No.
Chris Ketchum.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
Thomas Stoney.
Yes.
Tim Goins. Tim Gouwens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Ali Norwood?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Chibley?
Yes.
Jim Stett?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yes.
Ten yes or twelve yes to be.
The motion is approved. We turn now to the public comment, uh, on general items. And we do have two requests, uh, from individuals who wish to speak, uh, at this time. And, uh, we'll recognize Ed Green, uh, who wants to speak on wasteful spin.
You folks have voted to spend seventy-five million that my great grandchildren will end up paying this bill. Now, some of you young people, you don't work anymore, you some of your mileage, you get made retired or partially retired. Do you realize what you're doing when you could still look at this and say, "Thirty-five million dollars"? I don't know about you, men, I worked all my life and I'm sixty-six years old. I certainly didn't make that much money, but I hope you know what you're doing. For the ones of you that have stood for the citizens in the taxpayer, thank you. For the ones of you that stood by the ten-day rule, thank you. For you that voted to throw it out, I don't understand you and I'll pray for you. But I don't understand you, folks. You holler, you wanna save money, and you might as well build a campfire and burn the shreds. I wouldn't raise to waste, I was right there in Oregon. And I would hope that most of you were too. But by the way some of you vote, you must be raised with silverware, you know. I'm glad that you were. But you are putting things on the census of Hamilton County between everything else. And I just, I wonder if they'll survive. We are in a rough economy. And I don't foresee it getting that much better until at least till after election. And God help if the wrong one does it. I just don't understand you. I will tell you this, my God, I pray for you, because some of you certainly need your damn money. But I don't understand you. I don't understand why you, your oath is not to take care of the taxpayer, to look out for the taxpayer. Surely you didn't take the oath to burn that or misbehave. If you did, I'm sorry, boy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we'll recognize, uh, Lindonoy, who wishes, uh, to, uh, speak on several items. The jail and jail procedures and, can't think out the other word.
I think I'll stick on the general issue as long as it's county business and the general comments. I'm going to address the jail. The need of this county for a new jail is obvious and has been obvious for many years. That jail over there is nothing but a dungeon. And as soon as you leave that place, or at least the lower level, it should be used for storage. And that's another reason you never needed that maintenance building for storage. You need, put it down in the bottom jail. The issue is not whether you need a new jail, it's what kind of jail and what kind of justice center, what kind of courtroom situation. You don't have to spend seventy-five million tax dollars to solve our jail problem. You've chosen to spend seventy-five million dollars. This whole matter started as a need for a new jail, then some of you were not here and you haven't been brought up to date even. Because in twenty-seventeen, Mosley presented a plan that had four hundred and forty-eight beds and new courtrooms. And for those who are here, you might remember option J, it had a price tag of thirty-five million dollars. Now, I know the jail you're looking at will house more than that. But believe me, it doesn't double the cost to house another hundred and twenty, fifty inmates. After Dojarfist died, May of twenty-nineteen, that's when things went nuts up here. The project turned into a seventy-five million dollar wish list, including not only a three-story, multi-story jail that the sheriff tells you he cannot staff and he's told you that numerous times. But then it also included a new twenty million dollar justice center and a new maintenance building and multiple property purchases and land swaps and you name it. Commissioners and finance committee refused to support a referendum to let the people vote on the eighty-five million dollars of debt that was proposed, ten million for West High and seventy-five million for the jail justice center. That was inexcusable. And for some of you to say, "I listened to the people in my district," you had an opportunity to let your people vote and you said no. The jail justice, city, uh, justice center committee, made up of all commissioners, then voted just a few months ago not to look at the forty-five million dollar.